Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 6:30 PM in Assembly Chambers on Wednesday, May 14th. We are here for the Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session. Could I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Frazier?
Here.
Mr. Neff?
Here.
Mr. Dagan?
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Williamson?
Here.
Mr. Cleary?
Here.
And Mr. Mangini? You have a quorum?
Thank you. Let's move on to citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. If you would like to make comments and you are listening, feel free to use our local number, 907-486-3231, or our toll-free number at 855-492-9202. This is for general comments only, for general topics, and we ask that you address the commission Okay, looks like we don't have any citizens' comments this evening, so we'll go ahead and move on to item four, Items for Discussion. Item number A is Case Number 25-012, Amending Various Sections of Kodiak Island Borough Code, Title 17, Zoning, Related to Assisted Living Residences. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Chris French-Kuny, Development Director. The commission has reviewed this multiple times at multiple work sessions. This amendment is related to assisted living residences, which is a state licensed use under what is called an assisted living home. We use the term assisted living residences because it covers both facilities and assisted living homes, and those are basically as proposed in this ordinance based on the number of people being housed. What was proposed in the ordinance that's listed here is if you have more than five people, it becomes an assisted living facility, and it has different zoning requirements than one that's less than five people. We use the five people because we have that five people listing in the definition of a dwelling unit or of a family that says, you know, if you have, if it's no more than five people unrelated by blood or marriage, and so we're using the five. I have spoken to the borough attorney about that. His only, he didn't have an issue with it because he was basically said, "This is up to the commission and eventually the assembly," because it really differentiates what is allowed in certain zoning districts as permitted and when does it require, say, a conditional use permit in certain residential zoning districts. And so that's really something that both the commission and the assembly will need to decide. One thing, though, that I did do, and the reason why I put this back on, because the last time we reviewed this, the commission had said they, you all thought it was ready to go for public hearing, but one of the reasons I put it back on is because I did, was able to get the list of licensed assisted living homes in Kodiak and was able to reach out and contact all the license holders. I had two of them respond. I told them about today's, tonight's meeting. I was hoping they would be here, so it doesn't appear that they are here. I don't think we have anybody on for a call or anything. So there's not a huge hurry for this particular ordinance to go forward. The assembly already has the two rezones from Old Harbor. In your packet review tonight is the pet-related use, which actually has at least a resident of the borough who's hopeful to get that one going. If you want, we could, you all can just move this again to the next work session, and we can try to see about getting those folks that have licenses here locally to attend, say, the next meeting.
Comments from the commission?
I guess my question would be with those individuals that currently have licenses for them to come, are they seeking to have more than five patients or members at their facility, or?
Yeah, and I had sent them, I sent them the, so when I reached out to them, I sent them the draft ordinance, kind of explained what it does. I told them, "Today, we don't have this use listed in our code." And so we were trying to get the use listed. I know Bronwyn and I have received questions in the past from folks who were trying to look at doing an assisted living home or facility, depending on the size. When I talked to one individual who has licenses, they were saying they don't typically have ones that are over five people. It's usually five people or less. I did not, was not able to talk to the other person, other than they did respond and said that they would try to be here for the meeting. And that's in the total, the main question was kind of that breakdown. You know, if it's five people, we would allow it in pretty much any zoning district, residential zoning district without a conditional use. If it's over five, then pretty much all the single-family zones, we would require a conditional use permit, and then like an R3, and the, and the commercial zones, they would just be allowed. And I didn't really get a whole lot of feedback on that. I was hoping, as I said, I was hoping we'd have people here from multiple of the license holders. There's, the two I spoke to have the most licenses in Kodiak, so I was hopeful that, hopefully, one of the two would show up tonight.
I personally think it would be helpful to hear from them, or at least receive some sort of confirmation that, that the ordinance looks, looks good to them, looks reasonable to them. So I wouldn't have any opposition at all to just putting this on as an item for discussion at our next work session. What do you guys think?
Chairman, Chairwoman, rather, my apologies. Would you like a motion to?
No, we can't vote at this meeting, but we can come to a consensus that we would like to put this on our next agenda.
So I would agree with the consensus to move it to next work session or next meeting.
Everybody feel good about that?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Yep, and I'll reach out to the license holders again, and hopefully they'll be able to attend the...
Yeah, maybe, maybe now that they've got a little more notice, then they can clearly schedule for us.
Great, I mean, they have the ordinance, no one came back and said, "Oh, my God, this is, this is terrible," or anything. So, I mean, I think it's probably fine, but it'd be nice to have them be here and provide some input.
Yeah, definitely.
I definitely would like to hear from them, so more opportunity we can give to them.
Also, I just wanted to put on the record for those not in the room, Mr. Dagan arrived at 6:32 PM.
My apologies.
That's okay. I just want to make sure you, make sure you got counted as present. Okay, so let's go ahead on to item B, under Items for Discussion, which is Planning Commission Training.
Okay, so we'll let Bronwyn put the PowerPoint up on the screen here, and we'll start. So, so, good evening. Well, tonight, we're going to discuss basically general training for the Planning and Zoning Commission, or Planning Commission, if we're going to use a less formal term. Next slide, please. So we'll discuss several important topics related to the commission, and a brief introduction, you know, will explain the role of the commission and what is expected of the commission. And so as you see here on this slide, it talks about some of the things that we'll discuss, such as cases, and meetings, and motions, and findings, and how staff plays a role in the meetings, and so on. Next slide, please. Okay. So first, I want to discuss the reason the commission exists. The authority that the commission has been given by the state and local government, and the composition of the commission is also established by local government. And we'll talk a little bit about, you know, why communities plan, and also the general purpose of this training. Next slide, please. So Planning Commission is a group of citizens that serve local government, but, you know, what does that mean exactly? So the commission typically has two types of reviews that they conduct. One are reviews where the commission is the decision-making body, and the second is where the commission is an advisory body. These can change from one state to the other, and from one local government to the other. So what are some of the expectations of the commission? So the commissions are expected to provide an informed perspective on development needs and issues in their communities, and be an honest advisor to local governments they serve when advising them on particular advisory actions. Next slide, please. So I'll talk a little bit about authority in Alaska statutes and also borough law. So the authority of the Planning Commission comes from two sources, state and local regulations. Each state may be different, and therefore each local government may be different. In Alaska statutes 2940, it's a specific chapter of Alaska statutes that apply to planning, platting, and land use powers. These regulations direct what can and cannot be done at the local level, and the Borough Code, based on the state laws, created by, creates specific laws that either regulate the commission or state the commission's duties and provide guidelines for conducting those duties. Title II in our code talks about financial compensation to the commission. The composition of the commission, in other words, seven members, three from the city of Kodiak, four from the borough. Three-year terms provides for powers and duties. Other things that the code talks, the Title II talks about is comprehensive plan, CIP list review, right-of-way vacation reviews and name changes, as well as case reviews, plans for specific areas, and also reviews of proposed public improvements. Title 12 is where we talk about, is where street name changes are regulated. Title 16 is your plat review and vacation, where we have subdivision regulations. Title 17 is our zoning code, where we talk about rezones, conditional use permits, variances, code amendments, as well as appeals of staff decisions, which the commission also reviews. And then Title 18 talks about land disposals, where the commission has a kind of a first step in the role of land disposals. Next slide. Municipalities plan to have some control over the type, location, design, and costs and effects of development. The commission will make decisions about how the borough should develop. Planning can save money, and good planning today can save money for tomorrow. Establishes ground rules and standards for residents, developers, and agencies. A community that has a comprehensive plan and land use regulations and follows them signals that accepted standards and procedures apply to community development. It also supports economic development by conducting a planning process that allows residents and decision-makers to examine alternatives and courses of action that can promote employment and economic well-being. It also provides a forum for reaching consensus, which is a vital aspect of community planning. Consensus in this context means a formulation of goals about which a majority or more of the community will agree. It promotes good design through an effort to promote higher-quality development through the review of process, as well as creation of regulations. Plans also help us protect property and property values, and one of the oldest goals in planning and zoning, which uses the separation of potential nuisance land uses from residences to limit negative impacts. Planning also reduces property and environmental damage by identifying areas where development may be inadvisable because of environmental conditions, and this can be because the environment may negatively impact development, or that development may negatively impact the natural environment. Next slide. So our purpose for training. It helps new commissioners learn their role in local government and how to effectively participate in that role, helps the chairperson and the commission make informed decisions, meet legal requirements, and run effective meetings. It's also important for new chairs and vice chairs. It also assists staff in their duties supporting the commission, and it also can be a refresher course to veteran commissioners. Next slide. A little discussion of cases. So the cases that the commission reviews can be split into three categories. We have our quasi-judicial decision-making, general decision-making, and then advisory cases. So quasi-judicial cases include conditional use permits, they include variances, preliminary subdivision plaits, and appeals of staff decisions, and we'll discuss more about quasi-judicial cases later on today, in this presentation. Decision-making actions are those that are not quasi-judicial, but the commission has the final action on them. The only case of this type in the code is street name changes. Advisory cases are those where the commission makes a recommendation typically to the assembly, excuse me, to the assembly. Four of these types of cases or reviews are considered legislative actions since they result in ordinances. These are rezones, which change the legislative adopted zoning map, code amendments, which change borough code for Title 16 and 17, and as well as the adoption of the comprehensive plan or any amendments to it, as well as any other adopted long-range plans that are, that become part of the comprehensive plan. Next slide. So on to quasi-judicial cases, which are typically the cases that most planning commissions see or deal with. So quasi-judicial cases involve those decisions that have a direct effect on the rights and liabilities of a single person, or occasionally a small group of identified persons. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. These words from the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution, and similar words in the Alaska Constitution, give rise to a number of rules applicable to decision-making process of most planning commission proceedings. The due process clause is the most important, most important pervasive and frequently encountered constitutional principle. The ratification of the Fourteenth Amendment after the Civil War took the phrase "due process of law" and used it to limit the actions of state government. Procedural due process requires that before any person is deprived of life, liberty, or property, they must be given a fair hearing or an opportunity to be heard and defend against proposed action to be taken against them. So one, sufficient notice of hearing. Two, fair hearing before an impartial tribunal. And three, a record of the public process must be kept. Substantive due process requires that no person may be deprived of life, liberty, or property under circumstances that are unreasonable, arbitrary, or capricious. This constitutes a major limitation on the police power of the state and is relevant to the concepts of takings. In the case of the commission's decisions, it is about fairness and ensuring that the commission's decision is not arbitrary or capricious, and that all decisions are based on the facts of the case. Ex parte contacts is a discussion of quasi-judicial case between a citizen and a commissioner outside of the public forum. Ex parte is a Latin term that means "from or on one side only." So what to do when this occurs, or if a commissioner has a conversation, and that conversation turns to a discussion of a current quasi-judicial case that is before the commission? What should the commissioner do? So the commissioner should stop the conversation, explain that commissioners are not permitted to hear anything about the matter except at the public hearing. Correcting ex parte contacts, if a commissioner was involved in an ex parte contact, under any circumstances, you may be able to overcome that fairness problem by disclosing the contact and the substance of what was relayed to you at the beginning of the hearing. This will get the evidence relayed to you on the record and out in front of the interested persons. Then you should state whether this contact has swayed your view of the matter, and whether you can give an unbiased view of the evidence presented. If the answer to that question is no, then you should be asked to recuse yourself from that case. Now onto the next part. We talk a lot about, sometimes when we have cases, it's conflict of interest, and, you know, there are specific laws, especially with the state, but also local laws that impact this. So public officials have a duty to make decisions in the best interest of the public without the influence of personal interests. And, but what constitutes a conflict of interest? In Alaska statutes 2920-010A4, it requires that each municipality adopt a conflict of interest ordinance, which provides that a municipal employee or official, other than a member of the governing body, may not participate in an official action in which the employee or official has a substantial financial interest in the matter. However, the law does not provide a definition of what is a substantial financial interest. The Borough Code does have a definition of substantial financial interest, which states "an expectation of receiving a non-trivial, pecuniary, or material benefit or loss, a person who has ownership interest, or is a director, officer, and employee of an organization or entity, and has a substantial financial interest in regard to that organization, and may not vote on contracts, agreements, or other actions involving that organization." In addition, planning and zoning commission members are considered municipal officers by Borough Code, and therefore are subject to KIBC Section 235-010. While other subsections of the Alaska statute set out a procedure that could allow governing body members to participate in a decision in which the member has a substantial financial interest, these subsections do not apply to the Planning Commission. Therefore, the financial interest statement quoted is absolute, and a commissioner who has a substantial financial interest in a matter cannot participate in the official action of that matter. Next slide, please. So we'll talk a little bit about types of Planning Commission meetings. As you see here, we talk about regular meetings, special meetings, and then also work sessions. So as I mentioned, we have three types of those as listed here. Regular meetings are decision-making meetings and often include public hearings. The commission should try to have scheduled meetings for the year, and must always provide notice of the meeting as provided for in Borough Code and in State Open Meetings Act. Special meetings can be held under conditions set out in Borough Code and the commission bylaws. Reasonable public notice is required. The subject of the special meeting is typically limited to address a special project or correct an error at a previous meeting. In addition, special meetings can be called for emergency or extraordinary circumstances. Work sessions are less formal meetings and allow commission members to receive information and discuss matters in a more relaxed manner. Work sessions are not viewed as regular meetings, therefore motions are not allowed, or any other means of taking action to resolve a question. Review of quasi-judicial cases at work sessions must include the applicant or applicant's representative for the case. Without this participation, there could be a potential due process issue with your quasi-judicial case review. Next slide, please. In terms of running a meeting, so there's many factors involved in running a, having a well-run meeting. The chair has a very important role in this, in the meeting. The attitude and abilities of the chair are critical in having a successful meeting. The chair is somewhat removed from the meeting in that he or she does not participate as fully in the meeting as other members of the board. Since it is the chair's job to preside impartially over the meeting, he or she does not normally become involved in the debate or deliberations, except to lead the group toward making a decision. The chair has two types of responsibilities, those contained in the Borough Code and commission's bylaws or rules, and those related to the chair's leadership abilities and the expectations of the public and other commissioners. Some procedural responsibilities include: running a timely meeting, an orderly meeting, moving business forward in a fair and timely manner; maintaining order, eliminating disruptions, gavel down bad behavior; keep business moving; help by summarizing what was heard and getting the cause to a vote, or the, excuse me, the case to a vote; managing public testimony; reasonable length should be relevant to the case; repeating testimony should be discouraged; preventing arguments by either preventing or dissuading sharp exchanges limited to fact gathering; understanding parliamentary procedures, understand motion-making, what is needed to make a motion on a case; and tying things together, guide a commission toward a decision. The Borough Code and the bylaws of the commission prescribe the parliamentary rules for the commission, in this case, the use of Robert's Rules of Order. And we'll discuss some of this, the basics, in our next slide. Quorum, and then Borough Code states the commission is made up, in this case, seven members, with four members being a quorum. And again, a quorum is the minimum number of commission members needed to convene a meeting or conduct business, and a quorum is always a majority of total members. So in this case, we have four members, and the commission bylaws require that there must be four votes in the positive to approve a motion. For quasi-judicial cases, if four votes are not obtained to pass a motion, the commission will need to either propose additional motions, or postpone action to the next meeting, or additional members of the commission may be present. In your motions, all formal actions taken by the commission are initiated by a motion. Stating a motion places a matter before the commission for its consideration, and then permits debate to take place. Amendments to the main motion are always voted on before voting on the main motion itself. During discussion on the motion, members give their reasons for supporting or not supporting the motion that's on the floor. Formal acts of the commission, especially quasi-judicial actions, and even some legislative actions, such as rezonings, require the statement of findings to be part of the motion. This can be done in simple situations, such as, "I move to approve case number 27-001, a variance to allow six-foot encroachment and require 15-foot eastern side yard for a proposed principal structure, and I base my motion on the evidence presented today and the findings of fact in the staff report." That would be a very simple motion on a case. Findings are a statement by the commission of the standards, evidence, and reasoning used to arrive at a decision. In some cases where the commission does not agree with the findings in the staff report, the commission will need to create their own findings, based on the review criteria in the applicable code section. Typically, you'd be able to find those in your staff report. The commission may also defer, based on their bylaws, may also defer action on a case to the next meeting to allow staff to draft findings. Now, however, when staff does that, they're looking for direction from the commission on what to draft in terms of those findings. And this will allow the commission to move forward with an agenda instead of delaying other cases while trying to formulate findings. The commission could also delay action on a case to the end of the agenda, so they can finish other cases before delving back into formulating findings for a case. In addition to finding, some cases like subdivisions and variances have conditions of approval. These conditions must be stated during the motion, or at least referred to if the conditions are in the staff report, and the commission who makes, the commissioner who makes the motion agrees with those proposed conditions. Conditions can be used as a way to make change, which can be used to make changes to the case that might change the opinion of someone in terms of a review or a vote of a case. And this may change the, a member's opinion on the case, and also may occur during deliberation of the case. If conditions are created during a meeting, they should be read into the record of the meeting, so there are no misconceptions on what is required. And again, if you need to postpone an action on a case for conditions to be formulated, those can be, that could be done as well. Our next, and staff. Thank you. So for staff, staff provide varying degrees of expertise and assistance to the commission. Planners carry out the tasks associated with administering the land use regulations, research cases, prepare plans and reports, and distributes and explains results of plans and the review of cases. Commissioners can call the planner to ask questions of cases, and regarding the staff report, and any other questions related to the record of the case. The clerk, secretary, or parliamentarian does most of the administrative work around creating agendas and completing minutes for meetings. In addition, they act as the expert in procedural questions that may arise during a meeting. They also call roll call votes and assist the commission in completing its work on a case. Next slide. So other potential trainings that, you know, if the commission wants us to do that, we can, we can establish those for you would be, and we talked about some of these a little bit in this particular presentation and training, but I have listed a few of those here on this slide, such as Alaska Open Meetings Act, or Conflict of Interest, or Robert Rules of Order. These are things that we could set up future trainings on if the commission wants us to do that. Next slide. And then here, just for our last slide, I just want to thank everybody for kind of sitting through and not falling asleep for my, my training this evening, and again, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those. If anything comes to mind after the meeting, don't hesitate to email me, or email Bronwyn, or Haley, and ask us questions if you have any. So, thank you.
Hey, I thought you did a great job. It was much more interesting than the videos. One thing I wasn't sure about was the ex parte contact, actually potentially recusing ourselves because of that, because in the past, when the lawyer was talking, the only thing they ever thought we really needed to recuse ourselves was the part you mentioned about financial conflict, and...
Yeah, so ex parte is an interesting piece. So, I mean, that is, it is something that's very important for quasi-judicial cases because it deals directly with due process. If someone is talking to someone outside of the public hearing, they have the potential of getting evidence or information that may not be privy to the applicant and not privy to the other commissioners, and then so it's very, or the public, because it's a public hearing. So it's important, if someone comes up that wants to talk to you about a case, it's important to tell them, you know, "I can't talk about this case. This is a type of case where I'm not allowed to talk outside of the public hearing." You know, and you can tell them to please come to the public hearing, or they could provide written comments to staff, and you can provide them, you know, my email address or whoever, or email, or phone numbers to contact us to do that. But if you talk to someone about that, it is your duty as a commissioner to, at that public hearing on that case, you have to disclose that to your fellow commissioners on what the contact was, who it was with, and then also whether, as it's, as we stated in the training, is whether you can still, in an unbiased way, review and act on that case. And as I, when I mentioned about recusing, if you feel that you can't do that in an unbiased way, then you should recuse yourself. So it doesn't, it's not a hard and fast rule that you need to recuse yourself, but it's really, if you feel in your heart that whatever information you got during that ex parte communication, and you believe it's not going to allow you to be impartial in your review of a case, then, you know, our attorney and others would say you need to recuse yourself from that.
Yeah, if it was information that nobody else could be privy to, I would imagine if it was... if it was information that they were going to come out anyways and everybody would hear, it shouldn't make any difference, so would it?
Yeah, I mean-
Because we're going to get people, I mean, we're in Kodiak, people know us and they'll say, you know, "Hey, I know court, I'll give him a call, he's on planning zone," and they'll say, "Hey, what do you think about my case? What's, you know, what's the deal here?" And they might want to get some information on how things work, or whatever, and not necessarily-
Court, I'm not going to be able to tell you that you can do, have those conversations because our attorney is going to say you can't have those conversations.
Okay, no, I was kind of looking for that, if that's, I've had people-
If it's a legislative case-
Saying, you know, "What's going on here? How's this work?" And they're just kind of trying to figure out, so that's a staff thing where you wanted to say, "Call, talk to the staff," strictly.
Correct, and they certainly talk to staff and will provide the facts. We have differences here, you know, we're talking about quasi-judicial cases, so, you know, variances, conditional use permits, subdivision reviews. It's not on rezones or code amendments. You certainly couldn't talk to people about those outside of the hearing.
Okay.
I'm not saying it wouldn't be still a good idea maybe to disclose that if you feel that it's information that would be helpful to the rest of the Commission. You certainly can disclose, you know, conversations you have with people on that. I would again urge people, if they have conversations with you, even on legislative actions, have them come to the hearing, or provide comments in writing, whatever they can do. Because, you know, things sometimes get lost in translation, you're not the one that really is the one that has the comment, so-
Oh, I understand, yeah, and generally speaking, I've actually always said, you know, "Talk to staff," is not my purview, but even, I haven't really quasi-judicial, I don't think I've had that, I think it was a rezone, somebody in particular was talking about that. So there's a difference between a rezone isn't quasi-
A rezone, so anything that ends up in an ordinance before the assembly, so in this case it would be, in this case, a rezone or a code amendment, and those two, those are legislative actions, so they're not, they don't have quasi-judicial rules of regarding due process and things like that to follow, or ex parte communications to follow. We're talking really, in this case, the quasi-judicial, which are the variances, conditional use permits, subdivisions, things that the Commission has the final action on. I mean, anything that you have as advisory, you could talk to someone outside of the hearing because you're not making the final decision.
Yeah, right, well, I'd rather they talk to you on most of that stuff, it's just, like I said, occasionally you have a friend and they want to tap your brain a little bit about something, so I just wanted to know where to draw the line on something like that. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Of course you can.
Thank you. I just think that for what you guys-
Will you tell people who you are, though?
Oh, hi, I'm Seema.
Thanks.
I am the assessor, but I am also ex officio on this board, or for this Commission. Honestly, unless you know exactly what is legislative and what is not, it's always in your best interest to just say, bring it to public hearing, or bring it to the Commission. Don't try and decide for yourself, because then you literally have to announce at the next meeting, you know, if you had a conversation with someone, and it's just in your best interest not to have that conversation, and just always say, "Sorry, that's something that I'm not supposed to talk about." And, you know, bring it to the Commission, do it in public. Thank you.
And I would just add to that, because it's always harder to be the, I mean, you listen to someone and you're trying to relay what they told you. It's always better if that person who has the comment, or the concern, if they express it directly to the Commission. And as I said, it can be in writing, it can be on the phone at the meeting, or, you know, here at the meeting. So it's always better coming from them, because there's no, you know, translation issue or any like thing that gets, you know, maybe doesn't come across correctly based on what maybe you heard. This is coming straight from the person who has the comment, and then it's always better to have it come from them.
Yeah, what I was always told, even before I worked in local government and planning, when I was on a different Commission, is that you have to act, you have to speak at meetings, and you have to vote as if your actions are later going to be reviewed in court. Because, I mean, we're sitting here now and there aren't that many people in the audience, but the reality is, there are land use law books that are thicker than dictionaries that address issues like procedural due process, where people's procedural due process was violated because the integrity of the hearing was lost because of ex parte contacts. So every decision that you make, it could come back later, and you want to make sure that if it's read in the newspaper, that you're on the right side of that.
And I will also say that there are states where even certain, what we would say, here we'd call them legislative actions, do fall under quasi-judicial. I will say, I worked in Kentucky, any rezone in Kentucky is a quasi-judicial matter. And so you can't have ex parte contact, even if you're just making a recommendation to your city council or county commission, you can't have ex parte contact in that state, and that's spelled out in their state regulations. So, as I said, each state is different on this. Alaska, you know, we look at it as legislative action versus quasi-judicial, and again, legislative actions are those things that end in an ordinance that changes the zoning map or changes the regulations.
I would also say that with conflict of interest, there's the way that conflict of interest is defined, right? But then there are cases where there could be a perception of impropriety, whether there's money involved or not, it could be deemed by the public that your participation could be viewed as improper. So if you ever feel like, "Well, I don't have a financial gain, but I live right next door," or something, and it's a conditional use permit case that would allow some pretty loud, or some pretty different stuff right next door to you, right? Like, that is something that you should at least bring to staff and question whether or not they think that maybe you should bring it up to the Commission for discussion. It could be that the group says, "No, that's, there's nothing improper here," but it's just better safe than sorry in terms of transparency when you're going to make a vote.
So ex parte contact, as far as the person directly involved in the case, what about people outside the case, but they don't like what's going on with the case? Like, okay, their dog chases my squirrel, so I don't want them to have this variance or whatever.
So any, ex parte contact would be on any side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Side in favor, against, or even someone who's other. I mean, it's considered ex parte communications in any of those situations.
You'd think of it like a jury in a court case, right? Like, the jury isn't allowed to talk to anyone about the case on either side. So in this case, you're kind, that's sort of your role, right? Is to take in all of the information that's being presented on both sides and rule one way or the other. So in any case where you're sort of the jury in those quasi-judicial, you wouldn't want to talk to anybody.
I will also point out, as I said, if there's any other training you want us to, because I touched on this lightly on some of these topics, and if you want more in-depth on that, let me know, we can get some additional training that can be focused just on, if it's conflict of interest or anything like that, we can do that.
Are there any other questions? I feel like I talked a lot. No. You mentioned the Open Meetings Act, it probably would be helpful to have some additional training on that. At least, I guess I'll throw one more thing out there that's in relation to that. So Chris talked about quorum in our meetings, and kind of what that means, in that if we have four people up here, it's going to take all four of those people to carry a motion. On the flip side of that, four of us together outside of a scheduled meeting is also a meeting, per the Open Meetings Act. So there shouldn't ever be a point in time where four of us are going to be in the same place without us letting Bronwyn know so that she can appropriately advertise that as a meeting.
And I will also say one step further, and this is not something we could advertise, you know, if you, reason why we don't have you all, we don't want anybody to respond to all to emails that go to the Commission, because if it's a respond all to the Commission, it could be looked at as a meeting, even in email exchanges.
Chairwoman Fraser, question. So if we are independently all showing up at the marketplace, and we are within 100 feet of each other, is that going to then technically constitute a meeting? I mean, how much are we going to be focused on us living our lives and just serendipitously interacting with one another? Is there a tolerance or threshold that we have to meet to have that Open Meetings Act violated?
That's a good question. I mean, I would defer to staff. I can say that I have been here for about 10 years and have never accidentally ended up in the same place as three other, or four other people that were on the same committee as me. So I think our chances are probably pretty low, but I'll let Chris and Bronwyn speak to that.
If you were in the marketplace, hopefully you're not all four together in the same, like, close vicinity talking about something, because that's where we would really have a concern about Open Meetings Act for sure. If you were, if one of you was in the bookstore, and one of you was in the bakery, I mean, you're separated, you know, we're not looking at that as an issue, but if you're in the same room-
Well, galley tables, galley tables, and we all happen to see each other.
I'm not going to be the attorney to say that for sure, but again, as Sarah pointed out, if you all want to have some more training on Open Meetings Act, we certainly can get that established, I think the courts on this side will get help with that, too.
I would agree with that.
Awesome, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to packet review. So the first case that we have is case number 25-008. It is a request for a variance on parking to allow three onsite parking spaces, varying two parking spaces off-site on this parcel. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes, so the discussion on this, the case is, the site is located at 215 Mill Bay Road, is the current property that has been transferred to the Maritime Museum, and the subject includes two parcels, one, the principal structure, that's approximately 904 square feet, and then accessory structure that's approximately 280 square feet. The applicant has stated that the principal structure would be used as administrative office or administrative space for the museum, and then also the accessory structure would be used for storage of collections for the museum. So as you can see here, there's not really the museum where people will be coming at this point yet. So we're looking at really the administrative building that most likely would be kind of office space for the museum and then the collections. My understanding, and the applicant certainly is here, and they can fill you in more and certainly can do that even more at the public hearing, is that as additional parcels are transferred to them, there will be additional parts of the museum that will come together. So we're talking about a step process of putting the museum together. So in your staff report on page 24, we do have the applicant's justification, I won't cover all of that for you, but they do talk about the purpose of the space on this lot, and what it's going to be used for, and talking about the different variance criteria. I will point out on page 24 and 25 of your staff report, it starts at the bottom of page 24, and then the rest of that is on page 25, is where you have the variance review criteria. I won't read all that out, I will say that staff does support, or does recommend approval of the variance. Again, this would be to waive two spaces, so it would change the requirement from five to three. And then you do have a motion that'll be for your review at the regular meeting next week, and if you have any questions on this case, please let me know, and I'll have a little more in-depth kind of discussion, certainly at the public hearing.
Questions from the Commission?
So I just looked at the map, 215 Mill Bay, so was that previously residence and now is? So the rezone, I'm trying to remember exactly when that was done, I think it was, it was, it went to the Commission last year, towards the, I guess, fall of last year. I can't remember when exactly it was approved by the Assembly, because I know it went to the Assembly several times, I'm trying to remember, but it was approved to rezone this lot, and then the two lots on either side of it to business. I believe it was originally zoned R3, I believe, is what the zoning was of all three parcels. It is my understanding, and as I mentioned, the applicant is here, that I believe the parcels are going to be given to the museum, and I think one will be dedicated each year. I think it's because of tax purposes, not something that I'm going to try to get into with you on, but you certainly, when you come to the public hearing for sure, can follow up with the applicant on there. And so that the, you know, my understanding is, is that the museum is going to be built out over time as the lots become transferred to them. The main house, which is at the corner, is, always had been proposed, even through the rezoning cases, as the place where the museum would be, and that these other lots were more accessory or incidental to the overall museum once it is developed.
Looks like we do have Mr. Toby Sullivan here in the audience. Toby, is there anything that you wanted to share with the group this evening? Nope? Okay, all right, just wanted to check, thanks. I had a question about where the three parking spaces are going to be on the property and what the configuration was going to look like.
So I'm not sure if I have the plans, you're not really required to have a plan for a variance, unless it's a parking variance, but do you have that on there, Bronwyn?
I guess my biggest concern was, are the three spaces where the parking is now in the tandem parking spaces, or will there be a different configuration?
The three spaces, they would not be something where you have someone parking behind the other person's, so it would not permit that to take place.
Okay.
And the reason to get the parking requirement reduced is so that they can get a zoning compliance permit to change the use of the site to a museum from the currently single family residential.
Gotcha.
We can bring, I mean, we can have, I mean, if that's something that is a concern, we can bring the layout of where the parking is, those three spaces are going to be on the site, but they will have to, before they can get a zoning compliance permit, they will have to have three spots on the property that are not tandem spots.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to see how these vehicles will be parked in relation to these properties. And the reason for that is, I'm thinking about fire protection, EMS, police, snow removal, all of these things. I want to see how that impacts that particular location, so to see where those might be would be a useful thing.
So I'm going to state this to the Commission, just because we have to be relevant to the variance case, so when we start getting into things that are in the zoning compliance permit, we're getting outside of what the variance application is dealing with. In this case, the variance is not associated with the plan because it's not changing basically where something is located, or reducing a setback, or a required height of a structure or something like that, it's reducing the parking requirement. We certainly can show where the three spots would be, we do have that information, because we had to get to the, you know, three spots from five, right? So we do have that information, we can provide that at the public hearing, but when we start getting into things that will get covered by the building code, which, you know, the zoning compliance permit is just the first step in getting the change of occupancy, they will have to go to the building department for the review, since we're going to a non-residential use, that does kick in fire code review as well with the building code, so those things gets handled there. The Commission really cannot get into things that are handled by other groups or bodies or through other regulations outside of the zoning code or the subdivision regulations.
Thank you.
I guess, longer term, if the house that's on the corner, the structure that's on the corner now is going to be the museum, and this isn't going to be the museum, and it's actual use is administrative in nature, why are we using the museum standards that were used for the Alutic Museum instead of the administrative, like the office standard?
I mean, the office requirement is the- The office requirement is the requirement for, is what was used for the Alutek Museum. So if we were going to look at this as administrative space, we would look at it as office space anyway. So in that regard, it doesn't matter which way we look at it. But it is going to be used as a museum overall on the site. Now, in terms of what the building department does in terms of the occupancy, I'm not sure what they'll do right now as it's transitioning to the museum. Maybe they'll decide they'll look at it as office. I don't know. I haven't spoken to the building official about that. However, there is no listing in the code for museum, so we used what the Alutek Museums was, and that was based on the office requirement.
There's, was it one space for every 300 feet at the museum?
Yeah.
Because I thought that the code said that for office buildings that are less than 1,000 square feet, it's one parking space per 200 square feet of office space, which would increase the parking requirement?
Yeah. I guess the question would be, would it be located as office space if it's for administrative space for the museum? And what does that mean? I think we were looking at it as, since this is a planned development of these three lots as the museum, that's why we looked at it as the museum. But again, the requirement's based on the office requirement, which is what was used for the Alutek Museum previously. I guess the commission, if you feel that that's not the appropriate application, we can look into it. Bronwyn, I think you had a comment.
If you read the code right below, the one that you're referencing, there's two different offices. So there's one per 200 and then one per 200 of gross floor, up to X amount. So that's how they calculated it in the previous one.
For the Alutek Museum? Oh, gotcha. Yeah, I just didn't, I guess I, my question was what we were counting as administrative space versus like the, the like, storage space? Because if more of it is storage, then obviously that's less of a burden on parking. So I didn't know if maybe like, if it's a, if half of the structure, of the 900 square foot structure is actually what's going to be offices, and then all of the rest of it for right now is storage, then maybe that would change the calculation.
Based on the application is that the principal structure, which is the 900 square foot structure, would be the administrative space. The accessory structure, which is just under 300 square feet, would be used for storage.
Any other questions?
I'm a little confused. So is this the museum?
So in looking at the pictures?
Is it the first building or the second?
It's going to be the corner house, as I understand.
With the fire.
Is this building right here with the red roof? Do you see where my house is?
The red roof.
Maybe the next photo above it, Bronwyn's better. Yeah, yeah.
The one on the corner.
And we're dealing with the lot that's to the right of it.
Okay. Not this one that's with the curb with the fire thing. We're not changing those.
So this, the one that we're looking at, if you scroll down two pages, that one right there where the fire line is?
Yes.
The roof, red roof, is the corner house, is the house that is in question, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Not the red roof house. No, no. Not the one, that's not what's before you for the variance. It's the house to the right.
Yeah, it's this one right there.
It's the smaller one there.
The blue door. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And behind that house is the apartment building.
You mean behind the lot?
Behind the lot is the apartment building with parking.
There's a parking lot and then the apartment building, yes.
Yeah. Okay. And you can't park there? No?
Well, the applicant's not proposing to use that. They also, it's not their property, so they'd have to have an agreement to do that. And we would also have to know whether that property has excess parking to even, like, share.
And on that, the street parking is not allowed to be part of the counted spaces, even though there's quite a bit on the northeast side of the street?
So, yeah, we can't count on-street parking towards the requirement. You certainly can look at that in your review of the variance request.
No other questions? Going once, going twice? Okay. Thanks, Chris, and thanks, Toby, for being here this evening. We appreciate it. We'll go ahead and move on to our next item in packet review, which is case number 25-011. It's a resolution, FY 2025-05, of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommending to the Assembly amendment of various sections in Title 17 that are related to pet-related uses and to locate them in specific zoning districts as either permitted by right or conditional uses.
So something we didn't discuss in the previous case, and I'll discuss it here because it's also relevant. One of the things that we're doing, I did not discuss it in the training. One of the things that we're doing that I discussed with both the borough attorney and the borough clerk that we can do to kind of help with motions is that, and this is I've done when I was in Ketchikan and other communities in Alaska do it this way, is that we're going to propose doing resolutions for the commission that would be used in the review of cases. So you can have a resolution. So for example, on the variance case, not to just have to go back to that, but on the variance case, there's a resolution A for approval and a resolution B if the commission did not want to approve the variance. On your, on this case, for the code amendment, there's just a resolution A because we typically, you know, we don't have to do a resolution in denial. If you vote for the resolution and it fails, then it's just a failed code amendment, and it doesn't really go anywhere. So you do have a resolution A before you. I believe it's FY 2025-05 is that resolution number. It's going to include pretty much everything in it that the ordinance that would end up going to the commission would include. However, this resolution's basically written for the commission in terms of the resolution, in terms of recommending action to the Assembly, having your whereas statements about what supports it, and then also has the code amendment written out, just like you would in an ordinance, except it's in a resolution format that the commission would review and hopefully approve to go forward. And that would include in your whereas statements any particular review criteria that are needed for this type of case, which there is a few. Our review criteria on these are a little, it's a little broad. But those are included in the whereas statements for the resolution. So that resolution, FY 2025-05, is what the commission would be reviewing and voting on at next week's regular meeting. Nothing's changed in this based on the last time we reviewed it at work session. It's still going to be defining these pet-related uses, providing locations and zoning codes where these uses are either allowed as permitted uses or conditional uses. And then for the conditional use for a pet boarding facility, there's, as the commission had wanted, there are some detailed standards for that use proposed to be added to the conditional use permit section of the code. And unless you have any questions, as I said, nothing, I know we've reviewed this one multiple times, including, I guess, a couple work sessions ago. But if there's anything that you need a refresher on or something, please let me know. And we can certainly be more in-depth in that review, certainly at the public hearing, too.
Thanks, Chris. Are there any questions?
I have one. I don't remember seeing daycare services. I remember seeing a kennel, you know, overnight kennel, but I don't remember seeing daycare. So is daycare going to be okay in our code then? Or do we have to have the word daycare?
We wouldn't have daycare in, daycare's not a...
Blueberry Hill Pet Hotel would like to expand and offer additional daycare services to pets.
So we don't have, we weren't proposing to have like a daycare facility. It would be the same as any kind of pet boarding facility, whether it was overnight or not. So when we say a pet boarding facility, that would include overnight as well as keeping them for a portion of the day. So we're not, you know, we have not proposed a separate pet daycare use. I couldn't find any use like that anywhere else in Alaska. Typically, it appears goes with, you know, either kennel or pet boarding type use.
Okay. Yeah, I was just thinking daycare would be just a lot more traffic than like a border. But I guess that's fine. Okay, thanks.
Again, I'll point out that the pet boarding facility, it's pretty much, it's a conditional use permit in every zone, including commercial zones. So if there was concerns that that was for a daycare or day services, the commission has the ability to add conditions or whatever you all feel could be added as a condition that could mitigate any type of use. You also could deny it if you felt like it didn't meet the standards or wasn't appropriate for that location.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. We don't have any more items under public hearings. We do not have any old business or new business items. And then under communications, we do have three approval letters, which you have access to in your packet. And that brings us to Agenda Item G, which is reports. Our next meeting is our regular meeting that is scheduled for next Wednesday, May 21st. It is at 6:30 PM here in Assembly Chambers. And then our June meetings are scheduled at 6:30 PM, June 11th for our work session, and 6:30 PM, June 18th for our regular meeting, both in Assembly Chambers. Let's go ahead and go back to citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. If you are on the phone and would like to call in, please use our local number at 907-486-3231 or our toll-free number at 855-492-9202. We don't have anybody in the audience here to come up and sign their name and state their name for the record here. Anybody on the phone, Bronwyn? Okay. All right, citizens. Let's move on to staff comments. Chris?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I want to, if you haven't met her already, Haley Wallace is our new Secretary III for Community Development, and she will be helping out and being the parliamentarian for the meetings. And as I mentioned during our training, will be the one that you'll go to for any questions you have during procedure and also will be one creating the agendas and putting those together and contacting you about, which we want you to respond to your email when she contacts you about whether you're going to be there or not. She'll be the one doing those things. And so we wanted to welcome her here and just introduce her again to the commission. And then also on the two rezones from Old Harbor, so we did have the work session last week on those before the assembly, and they'll be on tomorrow night for introduction. And again, as you know, for these, anything that's an ordinance requires two readings, a minimum of two readings before the assembly. So, and then I'll have a little more detailed director's report next week for you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks. Bronwyn, did you have anything you wanted to share?
I do, actually. I want to give a gentle reminder that we do have the CIP coming up. So staff will be working on that here soon. I'll actually be working on the resolution, getting that together tomorrow. We do have like, kind of like, a soft deadline of June 30th. So if I do receive any projects prior to that or prior to our work session, I can introduce those to you guys so you guys can get an early look at those with the bid numbers and everything. But officially, you should see it in July. And then if you guys need to postpone, we can move it and postpone it, your decision until August. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks. Seema, did you have anything you wanted to share under staff report? No? Okay. Yep, no problem. All right, let's head on to commissioner comments. We'll start at this end with Mr. Dagan.
I appreciate that. But first, I'd like Haley to maybe see if she has a comment for staff.
Did you have a comment? I'm going to put you on the spot in your first meeting.
All right. So thank you very much. Welcome, Haley. Welcome, and thank you, Chris, Bronwyn, Seema. Thank you for your service. And Chairwoman Fraser, thank you for your leadership today. Other than that, I have no other comments.
I second Mr. Dagan. He speaks so well, so I can't really add to that.
Thank you.
Court?
No comment.
Short and sweet.
I'll follow his lead.
I just want to say to the staff, thank you for the training. It definitely, I don't know, can't remember who said it earlier, but it was way better than the video, so. Thank you, guys. We learned a lot, and it gives us a lot to work on. So thank you, guys.
Okay, that leaves me. Haley, welcome. Nice to have you. Question for staff, are the surveys still open for the housing and land use stuff? And if so, how much longer are they open?
So there are four surveys that are up there. They need to deal with a little bit of different. They're going to be up through the month of May, so we won't close them out until, I think, was it May 30th? I think it's our last business day of the month.
Okay. So I posted a link on Friends of Kodiak. Hasn't gotten a ton of traction, so I would really encourage all of you as commissioners to, number one, make sure you do the survey yourselves. Number two, let people know about them, please. Because we're going to be the ones up here after the plan is done, having to justify all of our decisions using that plan. So we want to make sure that it is representative, truly representative of our community. So please, please do that. And then the last thing that I have, I am super sorry, but I will not be able to be here next Wednesday. I have some labor relations meetings and an arbitration that I can't really get out of. So I will be in Portland on Wednesday afternoon through Friday.
So through the chair, I just wanted to say, one thing that we're going to do also from now on to help, besides just the resolutions, is that we're going to do a guide similar to what they do, the clerk's office does for the Assembly for the commission at the regular meeting. So Court, hopefully that helps you. And again, come in to the, you know, come in Wednesday afternoon. We'll be happy to go over things with you or do any kind of training that you need or help. Because I know, you know, this is only going to be your second meeting, and we'll be happy to help any way we can.
I'd rather be here. I promise. I would so much. I don't even think that makes up for it. I'd just rather be here. That was all I had. Thank you, everybody. Let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:38 PM. Thanks.